Good evening, everybody. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Conaschino?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Here.
Councilwoman Taglias absent. Mayor LaBrus?
Here.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6 at sec. Notice of having been published according to law with a copy on file in the City Clerk's office and a copy posted on the board and city hall.
Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
Flag allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. With that, we're going to go right to City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the agenda for the Committee of the Hall for April 23, 2019. First, I'd like to introduce Patrice Forssman from Upper Main Alliance to chat a brief moment about her budget. Hi, Patrice.
Good evening. Mayor, Council, thanks for the invitation to talk a little bit about the Main Street Alliance. Our proposed budget for 2019 is pretty much the same as in recent years, as far as the advocacy programs and services we provide for our membership on Main Street. The additional funds this year include the expansion area of Sussex through Atlantic on our southern border and through which we have welcomed 30 additional Main Street Business Alliance members. With this expansion came the necessary increase of services through our Cleaning Green Program, a brand-new website to better serve our membership, and the necessary marketing, public relations, and community outreach befitting the greater responsibility to best support Hackensack's emerging downtown. The additional funds will support a planned events calendar through the end of this year, continued Hack Pack support, and an imaginative creative placemaking program to delight all of the full-time residents of Hackensack on Main Street and visitors. A surplus noted from 2018 exists because funds allotted for the launch of our downtown branding and our annual street festival will be used this year once the two-way conversion is further along and we can once again welcome pedestrians to large-scale events. We will continue our campaign to support a liquor permit and the primary focus of retail recruitment for all that wonderful street-level retail space under the guidance of an expert strategist, which will maximize Hackensack's messaging to all retailers that Main Street is the next logical site for their new places. Bars, shops, galleries, and much more are the intended retail targets. This is a transition year as the Main Street Business Alliance gears up to roll out the welcome mat. We will be presenting our long-range plan for the special improvement district in 2020, continuing the efforts of this year and looking out three years and beyond. Thanks for all the support. The City Council continues to be Main Street's best ambassadors. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Looking forward to it.
Hey, as we grow, you grow. So, you know, we're all in favor, especially the, you know, we keep pushing this liquor permit thing. It takes lobbying and everything else to get it through. We know you need a new website. You guys have always been so helpful with the Hack Pack, you know, so look forward to the partnership.
I think selecting the correct retail is really critical to our future.
That's going to be a huge part of our 2019 focus on our budget.
I mean, I think getting the right businesses here so that they're sustainable and, you know, and smart and understanding the market, you know, who we are anticipating to be living here and when so that, you know, it supports not only our city and our other residents, but our new residents as well.
And really, one of the main points the strategists have told us that we have spoken to was the essential street-level retail that the City Council administration insisted on for all new developments. Kudos to you because that really is going to make our job a lot easier in terms of attracting the wrong types of people.
Now, your rate is stable. Has your rate increased from last year?
The rate has not increased at all.
Okay, so at this year, the rate is the same that the participants have been paying so far.
Absolutely.
So that's also a positive.
We're living well within our means.
Well, that's good to hear.
And increasing the services to our membership, which is really what our primary focus is and the benefit, obviously, is to the residents of Hackensack and visitors beyond to really understand that Hackensack has a lot to offer.
To be able to maintain and not have an additional burden on our taxpayers already, I think, is critical. To expand your service and to be able to stay fiscally responsible, I think, is critical to it. So I'm glad to hear that.
I think Main Street is the ultimate best gift to everyone when it's done right, and we're endeavoring to do just that.
Thanks, folks. I think that's the agenda tonight with this. So thank you for coming.
All right, thank you very much. I'm open for any questions if you have any.
Thank you.
Thanks, Patrice.
Thank you, Patrice.
Next?
Next.
Next, we have a discussion on the city of Hackensack's Riverwalk. You folks have been distributed some information if you don't have it. Susan, our project manager, has put together the city of Hackensack. It's going to have to make some decisions here of what standards and design we're going to use for the continuation of the Riverwalk. And obviously, as we develop these projects along the river, we want continuity and we want a style that really makes sense. You don't want a piece that's this and then it switches over from wood timbers like a boardwalk down in Atlantic City to concrete pavers to regular poured concrete to asphalt. So there's pros and cons to all of it. Obviously, I've listened to some of those decisions as far as what would work best, obviously, what works best and for the longevity of the city because the minute we build this or complete this, the city of Hackensack is going to be on the hook to maintain it. So I would look for something that would be easy to maintain and also stay within cost because if these things either fall apart or there's some kind of repair that needs to be, it'll be at the city's expense. So this decision, obviously, isn't made tonight, but I think Susan's done a good job of outlining concerns, maintenance, repair, strength, the aesthetics, longevity, what happens when you ice it, what happens when you salt it, what happens if you plow it. Obviously, our police department's going to have to patrol it. Our department's going to have to respond to it if there is a need. There's a lot of little nuances and things to be considered.
Okay.
Next, we have recycling, change in the pickup, and we're fortunate to have our new DPW sanitation supervisor, Mike Serbikian. So, okay, Mike?
Good evening, everybody.
You're up.
I'm Mike Serbikian. And recycling, the reason why the city of Hackensack should examine alternating the recycling schedule is recycling is it's costing the city a lot of money. The recycling facility plans, they're going up. We used to get paid for recycling, not anymore. Now, our fees are going up from $68 a ton for mixed, $38 for a single source. So if we're able to single-source our recycling, say cardboard one week, bottles and cans the next, we could absolutely increase our profit, our efficiency, also the productivity. We'll be able to, if bags are included and other kind of contaminated items, the whole load can get rejected or we can get charged a big fund. Right now, my guys are doing two routes at once, which is a long time. The entire town is split up into 10, and for them to do all the footwork, it's kind of hard to sort through a lot of items that either be left behind or will take it with us. And then if it makes it to the recycling center, it's an issue. So the plan is starting on double-week pickup in June for us to see if we can switch to alternating recycling where we can really take a look at keeping paper with paper, bottles with bottles, informing the public about removing plastic bags, sorting things correctly because cardboard, even though milk containers and such seem like cardboard, they go with plastic bottles. It's how they go. And again, like I was mentioning, our trucks are a little bit older, so the less stress we can put on them. And if by any chance we happen to have a member get injured or a truck go down, and if we're on the same source, we can have the other truck continue, go forward, carry out. And again, it is a big increase. I've noticed a lot of other municipalities keep it this way, and I'm open for questions.
If I may, I mean, you mentioned, like, the interesting fact about the milk carton.
Yes.
If there was some way we could get as much, compile a list that's as specific as we can and maybe get it on our website for folks, because I know there is a lot of confusion, especially with plastics, like we're saying.
Yes.
Why can you put a plastic bottle in but you can't put a plastic bag?
Yes.
Like, so, I mean, I know for a long time I thought plastic bags went in with the plastic bottles.
As did I for many years, yeah.
So, and I think that there is some confusion there, and I think if we could come up with a list that is as specific as you can make it and put it on our website, and then maybe next year, Ted, we could incorporate this specific list on our calendar, you know, where it really calls out some of these things that are unique. Like, I didn't even think about the milk cartons at all. I assumed that was cardboard, so.
Also, too, we are planning on putting on door hangers on every individual blue can, and that's how we'll notify it. So with the recycling coordinator, we'll make a little more detailed as possible. There's the reverse side that we can add as much as possible to that, and it is a lot. And part of Mr. Glema's plan is to update our website and then absolutely put it on our calendars.
And as always, if someone, say you had a party or something and you had a lot, you can always bring it down to the recycling center yourself.
Yes.
Like, if you found yourself in the summer in a situation where you couldn't wait for the every other week or you didn't want to, you could always do that, right?
And Main Street will not be affected. Main Street will still be able to put out the way they're putting out now so we can continue on with keeping up with Main Street.
Okay.
That's not an issue. Any of the apartment buildings that have the containers, that'd be too much to accommodate to wait for them to accommodate, so we will still grab that weekly. And other than that, it will be a seamless change. It would take probably about a month or so for residents to get used to it, and I think it works, it works just fine.
What do you think plastic bags are going to go?
Plastic bags need to either go in garbage or shopping centers such as Shop Right, Stop &amp; Shop, other places. They take the bags and they reutilize them or send them out to another facility. I do not know any other municipalities that are able to, or any other plants, I should say, that are able to recycle plastic bags.
Plastic bags are going to go into regular garbage?
As of right now, there's no way. Most, see, most recycling that goes to a sorting facility is sent out to Asia. It's not done within the states. And when it gets shipped out, it's put within a container. And when that container, if they look and see a few plastic bags, they'll send it back to the United States, which then will hike up our cost for recycling and so on and so forth. So the cleaner we can keep it, the less sources within, the better control we can have, and we can keep costs down, for sure.
I think making it available publicly is key because, I mean, I think Dave's question is mine. I mean, a lot of us weren't even aware of some of these, so I think making it as specific and as visible to the public would help a lot.
Absolutely, and we're also planning on creating special stickers as well to get, to put on the cans. And I'm also willing to accommodate, I'm not going to put a hard line if this does pass, that any of the services that were there weren't going to be there. We can do that slow transition for residents along the way. It's, I'm not going to be a finite guy where this is the law, this is how we'll do it. We can do a little transition to make it smoother for the residents.
I didn't, I did, okay.
At the end of the day, I don't want you to leave nobody's cans on the lawn and we get a phone call and you got to go get it anyway, so I don't want...
Well, in the beginning, I mean, if we are not grabbing plastic that week, we can't be grabbing plastic. But in, as the first few weeks go, when we, well, if we see a plastic bag in there, we'll tag the can, notice there's no cans, we'll still take it as normal for now, and then we'll be able to sort more. And as they come along, if they bring it to Green Street in a bag, we have canisters, our members there, cut the bags open, put it there, sort it, and then they can place it back down and the plastic goes into the garbage. I also don't want to have cans and papers just left all over the road either. I want everything, I want Hackensack to remain as pristine a town as it is or city.
I had a quick question about the containers. Right now, we have pretty, the recycling containers are pretty small. Would we be open to using bigger containers for recycling because now we're going to have every other week for cans?
So the 30-yard containers or 35-yard containers are more manageable for our workers to pick up, and not every garbage truck that we have is equipped with the flippers in the back for the 95-gallon can. So if we were to use the 95-gallon cans for everything, you know, that will cause a little bit of stress and injury until we can possibly examine that going forward.
Okay. But if folks needed a second can, maybe they could, a second...
Yeah, so I had, I talked to Mr. Glema about that, and as of right now, we, you know, they can go into a big box store and go forward. As of, we do not carry any 35-gallon cans right now.
Okay, so you could supply them.
Yeah.
I had one other question when I read...
Do you want to supply the can?
No.
You'd have to get your own.
You want to get your own for the recycling?
If you needed another one.
If you needed a second one. There's something else in here that says something about wet paper.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's, it's a list of things. Normally, the recycling center isn't super big on it, but when something's wet, it's weighed down.
Right.
So when it's weighed down, they examine the cost and...
But if it's raining and you have cardboard stuff tied up, it's going to be wet. I mean, we can't stop it.
Yeah, and we're talking soap. So when I leave on Green Street, when we have the open container, that really gets wet.
So you're really asking people to put their paper stuff in a sealed, closed container, so?
No, they could still tie it up. They could still tie it up. That's just one of the lists that the state of New Jersey will categorize contaminated material of. The biggest one is plastic material or if you could, I have a certain list, there's garden hoses, other things that look plastic that really aren't. You'll see a baby seat thrown within a chair, I mean, within stuff, plastic toys from children, whether they are plastic, they may not be made from the, you know, I, 1 through 7 material, paper napkins, anything, you know, if anything's done with food, whether you get a Chinese takeout, the metal container, if it's rinsed out, throw it in, it's aluminum. The top plastic, we take it. And the whole point is, it's to keep the cost down.
Thanks.
This, this whole process and change has been part of the recycling change and also the maintain, the twice-a-week pickup implementation. So we're going to phase this in, we're going to move slowly, but obviously, methodically to make sure that, just as Deputy Mayor Sims brings up, we don't want residents to start calling up and complaining because all of a sudden, somebody changed the rules, nobody knows anything about it, and now I'm stuck with all this stuff all over the street, and then the cans fall over, blows all over the neighborhood, and we wind up picking it all up anyway. So we're just trying to find a prudent way to move forward with this and find a way to make sure, because recycling now, used to be a revenue source, Jim would concur with this, and now that China doesn't take our recyclables because of the cost, it now becomes a liability, and funds that we used to count on in the recycling budget now don't exist and we have to put money in the budget. So this is a, the scales flipped the other way. So we'll sort it out, but we are, it is a process and it is a work in progress, and we're going to have to make some changes.
When do you think it's going to start, Ted?
I would say...
June 3rd. That's the double pickup as well as...
June 3rd, and we'll advertise that. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, sir. All the best.
Please leave me.
Is there any questions, more of?
One of the things I would do, I mean, we're going to have to educate everybody with the, you know, put the hangers on the cans and stuff, but we need to ask people to talk to their neighbors and spread the word, get the word out, maybe a couple robo-calls or Nixles and everything else, and we really need to get it out there. Otherwise, we're going to definitely have an issue with street, with people putting stuff out on the wrong day.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Number three, strike that, four, is the Johnson Park greenhouse proposal. This has been bantered back and forth, but I'm pleased to say that the resolution's in place, the approval of the $19,000 for the review of the greenhouses in place. I spoke with our environmental, what is your official title, sir?
I'm a resident.
But you're head of the...
His official title is Gary.
I'm the chairman.
Okay, I spoke to the chairman. We are also going to move forward with our community gardens. We have planners, Councilwoman Von Rudenberg has met with Joe Wglema. We have some seed money, obviously, to start these programs. It always comes down to some funding to get the process started. Because they're at some point going to have to form a 501(c), they're not prepared and they can't really solicit donations. There is a way to do it, but it's a lot of work for the, for the city, so we're going to help seed this, get this process started, start the community gardens, and watch the program, no pun intended, grow. Is there any questions before I move?
Have we done any preparation work yet?
That's ongoing as we speak.
Okay.
I just want to make sure it was approved tonight. We will commence, and there'll be no waiting for the Environmental Commission or the people for the support of the community gardens. Next is the M&amp;M Building upcoming dedication. Anybody that has not been over to the M&amp;M from the council has made some great strides. It'll be a beautiful building when it's done. We need to figure out date, dedication, refreshments, invitations, that's the clerk's job. I figured that much out. The PR firm, invite a guest, you're the secretary of the council. And the PR firm, and obviously photographs so we can memorialize that event. I don't know when the city has last built a building or certainly remodeled one to that detail, but if you haven't seen the building, you will be impressed when it's dedicated. We're down to some final issues. I was over there the other day. They sealed the gym floor. We're waiting for the colors and the layout for the basketball courts, volleyball, and the half-court split. We have a parking lot to do, and then they have a punch list, and we have some other issues to put in there. But for the most part, we're probably 85 to 89% complete would be my estimate. So Mayor and Council have to pick some dates, and we have to work towards that date. My guess is, because you don't want to have a dedication that you don't have a CO for, so I'm going to err on the side of late June, 1st in July time period because I want to make sure that we're absolutely complete. I don't want Murphy's Law to spoil a great event. So if the Mayor and Council among yourselves could pick some dates and something that might work, and obviously, we're going to get in the middle of people's vacations and so many things.
Try to, you know, project a CO from the city and the developer, or the builder, I should say.
Well, we're going to get a TCO first and then work towards that for the inspections.
I'd be comfortable with a TCO.
Okay. Next is the 2019 Recreation Summer Camp changes. We are adding a four-week junior theater camp which will run out of the H-PAC. We've moved the Baldwin program to Carver Park. The registration will be limited to 35 children, so it won't interfere with other programs. Camp Piggybank, Piggyback, with whom they have consulted with and there's no conflict. And our last day of camp, Carnival Day, will be a trip to Dave and Buster's in the AMC Theater. It will be a memorable, fun-filled day for those children at the last day of camp. And I have to say that the Recreation Department has their flyer together. They seemed well-prepared. Obviously, there may be a few glitches, but I think that we're prepared to move these programs forward, and the community and the children in this community will be well-served. Number seven, no parking sign changes Sussex, Meyer, and Lawrence. Not changing Fairmount at this time. Steve, do you have anything that you want to weigh in on this?
No, this was just a request from traffic folks because with the meters being installed, I think they determined it would not make sense to do street sweeping at times when metered parking would be available, so I believe they're moving things around, so that will not be the case, and they'll do the street sweeping at earlier times. So, you know, nothing particularly important about it aside from just, you know, continuing to clean up our Chapter 170 traffic ordinances.
So we're not including in front of the school? Because remember, we talked about this last meeting, that we were going to make the hours a little different so it didn't interfere with drop-offs at the school?
We had a meeting with the police department, and there's some issues that we need to coordinate with the Board of Education. So before we make that change, we need to get a cooperative spirit with the Board of Education on maybe some suggestions that they can help us with which could make this run smoother. The issue with changing the times for street sweeping is, you can change the times, but you're still going to have to move the vehicles and still have a place to do this. The, the issue is that we're trying to unload 610 children into a school in 10 minutes, so we need to sort that issue out. So before we make any changes physically or procedurally, I'd like to speak with them. So we're arranging a meeting now because our last meeting got canceled until after the election, so. And that would complete the City Manager's report unless there's questions.
Any questions, Council? None? Okay, with that, I need a motion to open to the public, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No one's opposed? Anybody who'd like to speak? The microphone is yours. Please come forward, give your name and address to the clerk, and you will have three minutes.
My name is Steve Stagg. I work for a company called Universal Electric. We're on the corner of Lodi and South Main Street. I'm sorry. Currently, we've been there for about 20 years. All of you are probably well aware of the flooding situation that occurs in that location. In recent, in the recent year, we've kind of encountered a different problem. The problem that exists is there's a main line that actually comes through the property of our building, or actually, our parking lot. We've been in touch with the, with the town and the Public Works Department. This has occurred previously, and it was always addressed very quickly. This has been going on probably since early September of 2018, and what's happened is we've gotten nowhere. Nothing has changed. They've come out, they've looked at it. They most recently came, they told us that they couldn't do an inspection because the water lines were full. Well, we know that because the water's not going anywhere. I have pictures, I have photos. The water actually comes up through our parking lot, bubbles right up. And the reason this is, you know, disturbing to us, at this point, we have employees who park their cars there. We have to move them, you know, every single time it rains, and it's only getting worse. And we get concerned because the summer, you have thunderstorms and it gets to that point where it's, you know, it hasn't gotten any better, and we don't know what the recourse is for us at this point. We've requested, we've been, I think, considerate, we've asked, you know, every possible person to see if they can help us, but they really have not come with any conclusion of what they can do for us. I know it's been addressed and, but...
I'm just curious, I'd like to know where the line that goes through your property comes from and goes to.
I think it's, it's been shown.
It's mapped out?
Your assistant inspector, I think, was there. He knows it's mapped out, and it literally comes right through the parking lot, I guess on the Lodi Street side.
Right.
And you could, I have pictures, it bubbles right up.
I've been on Lodi, I've been on Lodi Street when it was ever coming out and it's not raining.
Obviously, the, the flooding situation is one, but this is a little disconcerting for us because it's actually in our lot, we have nowhere to, where do we park our cars? We have service techs who are gone during the day, and they have to leave their keys, God forbid if it rains.
Have they tried jetting it, you know?
Well, that, I think that was the intention, but the water lines are full.
Right.
So at this point, they, they claim they can't do anything with it.
Okay. I'm going to put this on the record so there's no misunderstanding here. We've had two meetings with you folks present from your business. We brought in suburban engineering. We've gone through this. We tried to jet it, and it has water in it, so now we have to cap it off, pump it out, and then camera it.
Correct.
Because I guess this camera doesn't have scuba gear. So we understand...
Nor do we actually there either.
We understand the problem, so the latest challenge that the engineering firm of suburban is doing is to figure out, is there a way to divert this water? Because apparently, when they built Route 80, there's a ditch there and they cap that off, and it just basically creates a soup bowl where this water's in.
Where the soup bowl.
Right. So that we may have to put a pump station in there. Like everything in this city, there is no quick fix because when you go to fix one thing, you have to fix six other things that never got fixed. So when I first started here, it'll be three years, October 1st, the first thing I did was I went with Jesse down to your place, and our good friends at Fletcher Kramer made a cap that we bolted over because the water ran down and the storms ran in and blew the manhole off the ground because there was so much pressure. So I get a, just a little tingly when people say that the city's not doing anything about it. We're doing the best we can in the time we have because we're spending taxpayer money. And I want to make, just let me finish.
Certainly.
So I want to make sure that the... So, I want to make sure that the fix, the solution, what we're gonna implement, serves you folks and all the residents of the city, because flooding is a problem here. So, I don't know if you've ever attended these meetings, but there's been a discussion. Mr. Magan, my partner in crime here, we're gonna take a big bite out of this and borrow between eighty and a hundred million dollars, and we're gonna do something about this, other than throwing Band-Aids on it, because this is, needs to have a long-term fix. This mayor and council is very, very concerned about this. We've had residents that come in, bring photos, show flooding. I understand the predicament, but this is a compound problem, because you have Prospect Street, all the water runs down, the river attracts, traps, that's the first soup bowl that creates this. Then you had Eighty on the other side, they fixed the other, now we're up to a lasagna pan here of water that just lays in this low-line area, and the real solution is a pump. Well, so, two more sentences, and then you have a floor, is that we're going to cap that off, pump that out, and camera it. We just had on Newman Street, a water main collapsed across the street that we just fixed. So, we understand that there's much going on here, and like everything in this city, everything is changing. And hopefully, it's changing for the better. But we are actively working on a solution for this, and it's been an issue in front and center with this council and me since the day I started.
Well, I'm well aware of that, you know, we've talked about that. Our concern, obviously, we understand the main flooding issue on South Newman, you know, that's been documented, it's been there for a long time. This problem that we're encountering is actually, it was relieved previously, they've worked on it, with Jesse, this is going back a number of years ago, where there's apparently cracks in those pipes, or the seams have come apart. That's our biggest concern. While we understand the flooding is gonna happen on South Newman until it's corrected, this problem is fairly new, where now it's bubbling out of our property, and what happens is, South Newman, the flooding will dissipate, it'll go down slowly, but it goes away. It doesn't do that in our parking lot, because it's got nowhere to go. That's our biggest issue. So, the bubbling, is there anything they can do to check to see? I know what their intention is.
Right, so, when we cap that off and run the camera through there, we're gonna know whether there's no pitch, it's flat, maybe the pipes have disconnected, because they used the wrong base to hold this, and those bellpipes have pulled apart. We won't know facts before acts. I say this in a lot of other meetings. So, once we know factually whether we could line this pipe, maybe the pitch is completely wrong, we're gonna find solutions to this, because obviously, the Hudson Street section of town and that low-line area there seems to get a lot of this flooding issues, because there's just no place for the water to go. And unfortunately, the mayor sat through a meetings with the league, Army Corps of Engineers. If we were allowed to dredge that river, we could solve a lot of our problems here, but no, no, no one's gonna allow us to do that. So, the city seems to wind up holding the bag for every issue that comes up here, because solutions are limited, and the cost to fix them is plenty.
Well, let me ask you this, the short term, when do they plan to get back to at least looking at that?
The camera issue is forthcoming. So, that should happen probably in the next two weeks. The problem is, the minute it rains, it drains this whole thing backwards, and then off we go. That's not an answer for you.
The most recent time was at low tide, and it wasn't drained, so it's not going anywhere. I don't know, unless you pump it out, that's the only way it's gonna...
Understand, but I need to know if we're gonna put a pump to it, that the pipe has the right pitch, the right gravity, it's not cracked.
All right, gentlemen, we're way past our three minutes, but what I want to do, though, is...
We have a thousand pumps.
Let's, yeah, you make a lot of pumps.
That's what we do.
Let's get to, if we can, let's expedite getting a camera in there, pumping it out, and at least see what's going on with that pipe.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'll talk to you later, I remember that. Good evening, Catherine Salvo. Just a few things, this poor calendar that we took great pains in doing, it's not, it's not working now, because you're doing a whole recycling thing.
You don't even want my comment, but I think about that calendar, because that's exactly what I said was gonna happen.
Always, that's like when you pave, when you pave a street, and you have to dig it up because of X, Y, Z reasons, so there goes our recycling. That alternate side does work, it works in other towns. The big problem we have here, and I think our person in charge should know it, is that we don't have a proper container to put this stuff in. They gave us this little five-gallon, like, what do you call, Home Depot thing, and you put two things in it, it's full. Other towns provide, and they did years ago, they gave us a weighted bottom, because I end up bringing it, because I pick it up going down Hudson Street, it all blows around. So, they should give us a better container to put the recycles in, so that they don't go out, they don't go all over the place. Cardboard does get wet, that's why I have a problem with our recycling center, because our cardboard dumpster should be covered, so it doesn't get wet, because you're paying wet, water does weigh. So, that's another thing that we have to address, but it is hard, because nobody wants recycling, and there's no more money in it. It's nice to see that Baldwin is going to Carver, because Carver is our best-equipped park for the summer, and we have a program going there. Is that because you're gonna do work in Baldwin, and you're gonna divert, transfer the people from Baldwin to Carver for the summer program? Is that what's happening?
As previously stated, we're overhauling all of our parks, we have a park schedule.
Right, so it's nice to have them go to Carver, because that has the waterpark and all the other facilities. I just want to know, has anything been done about the two basketball courts that I mentioned last year, that hadn't been done in twenty years? The one in Columbus Park that the kids can't use at all, it needs to be resurfaced and repitched and redone?
They're on the schedule to be done this year, I guess you were...
Before the summer program?
I don't know, we've set the funds aside to make this process, but they are identified at Columbus Park to have those resurfaced.
I hope it, because they need it for the summer program, that's the big thing. I mean, you know, if it's after the fact in the winter, it's not needed. Okay, so what else do we discuss? Yeah, M and M, I think you better allow at least till July, because that parking lot is a lot of work. They took the big tree down last week, which was there for a hundred years, but you need it for parking. Baldwin, Seskmaier, yes, oh, and the other important thing is for the Board of Ed and the City of Hackensack to get together to do something for Fairmount, and they would like the meeting to happen before the PTA meeting happens, so that anything that's been decided can be presented at the PTA meeting in Fairmount, so that it can be, I was talking to Captain Foley today, so that it can be started this year, get the people used to what they can be doing, and then in September, they'll know what they should be doing, for safety. So, as soon as the Board of Ed can meet with the City of Hackensack to discuss the Fairmount plan, and thank goodness for the parents, the PTA people, and Fairmount for wanting to do this, because now we have full cooperation from everybody, and we need to move on with it. So, as soon as that meeting could be scheduled, that would be appreciated. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, my name is Gail Wells. Several months ago, at a zoning board meeting, there was an application being discussed about the Lightbridge Daycare Center. And more specifically, what was discussed was the fence that they are building around the playground, and that it's gonna create a four-foot alleyway to the next-door neighbor's property that also has the fence. The zoning board said that the Lightbridge had to put up shrubs, so that in the event the homeowner ever took down their fence, they would not be faced with a bare fence from Lightbridge. There was more concern, care, and conversation about shrubs that seemingly nobody's gonna see than there was about metal roll-up gates on Overlook Avenue for a building that has over two-hundred-and-seventy apartments with over six-hundred parking spaces. I don't believe I'm a stranger to anybody in front of me, and to my left and my right. There have been multiple violations as a result of these gates, which the property owner has tried to fix. Most recently, I did have another complaint, the constable came out and did readings. I have the report here, and I was quite stunned to find out that they were not in violation again. I was so sure that they would have been, because the noise is as loud as it's ever been. I have been questioned, why am I the only one complaining about this? And to that I answer, I don't know what the lifestyle is of my neighbors. I don't know how often they have their TV and radio on, if they ever open their windows, and frankly, how well they hear. I rarely have my TV on or radio, my windows are open three seasons out of the year, and my hearing is impeccable. This has caused a lot of strife in my life, and to the city manager, who has received emails from me over the weekend, when I am absolutely freaking out, because those gates are in use constantly. Now, the permit that was finally issued, after they installed the gates without the permit, was after the city knew about these violations, and that the property owner had tried to fix them. What begs the question is, when the permits were issued, why did the city not ask for the make and model number? I would think at the very least, the city should know the make and model number, to make sure these gates are rated for the use that they are intended. There was no traffic study done, there was definitely no conversation about design and aesthetics. I have pictures that I'd be willing to leave of what it looks like from the Devonshire's vestibule, and quite frankly, it's disgusting. I will leave you with this. On a Sunday last July, I sat there from seven to eight P.M. Forty-three cars in one hour entered or exited. I want the make and model number of those gates. You should want the make and model number of those gates. This is not about imposing martial law, this is about aesthetics, this is about community, this is about caring for our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, I didn't hear anything other than you would forward it to the mayor and council. I got an anonymous letter from somebody with ill intent, and I asked that people not have to give their address when speaking, okay? I mean, somebody, hey, I got somebody mad, which means I'm doing something right. But I didn't hear anything about that, other than you said you would forward it, but not even a, gee, you got a letter, but anyway. It's being investigated, and not by Hackensack Police, it's being investigated. I also had submitted an Oprah request for condo emails, and I got back that there were none, which is not true, because I sent you the one that existed. So, you know, the hiding, the lack of transparency, it just, it doesn't make me want to trust people, because I know an email exists, and I got back an Oprah request that said there are no records. So, which I sent to Mr. Kleinman, you were CC'd on that, but nobody got back to me. Again, I get anonymous letters, but, you know, the city council doesn't get back to me. Finally, the greenhouse, two months ago, February twenty-sixth, DMR was here, and you emphatically said no, Mr. Ehrenberg, unless Gary has some checks, no, this wasn't going to happen with the greenhouse, because of the DMR study. So, now, DMR's doing another study. I guess it depends on who asks, you know, or they keep asking until they get the answer they want, because you emphatically said no, and it's on video, that it wasn't happening. But now it's happening.
Okay.
What happened? What changed? What changed, that it was an emphatic no, and now we're doing it?
I'm not gonna, are we gonna debate this now?
I'm not looking for a debate, what's to debate? What changed?
I mean, again, questions should be directed through the chair, which is the mayor, and the mayor would determine whether or not for Mr. Ehrenberg should respond.
It's a cow meeting, it's his meeting.
No, ma'am. It is the mayor's meeting and the city council's meeting. Mr. Ehrenberg is the city manager, he is not the chair of this meeting, and so I would leave it to the mayor and the council to direct whether or not they wish Mr. Ehrenberg to engage in colloquy with Mr. Pasqua, and that's the council's decision, and more precisely, the chair's decision.
Where are we on time?
Well, right now, with all that, there's ten seconds left, but prior to you speaking, there was about twenty seconds.
I would recommend this, I would recommend meeting with Mr. Ehrenberg and having a discussion with him.
Fine.
And the city manager runs a cow meeting. Right?
Next, please.
Good evening, Garrett Tozano, Fairmount Avenue. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and council and city administration for moving forward on the greenhouse proposal, and secondly, to see some substance now to start the community garden, which we discussed in length at times, between the presentation back in the fall, and speaking about it going forward. So, we know it takes time. I don't think anybody said no, as was just stated, I think it was just a question of, I think it was just a question of finding the time, getting together, and moving forward. So, thanks again, we're gonna get this going, and I appreciate that, with the help of the administration. The reason why I really came up to the podium was that my main concern is, with the redevelopment, is the Sears property. I read the articles in the paper, the person that bought Sears has controlling interest, wherever the LLC is, somewhere from down south Jersey, I don't know if he has that or not, Mr. Lampard, but I have concerns about Sears staying at Hackensack. I hope they do, I hope they can recover. But when there's comments in the article by the new owner about, well, we want to switch over to, stay with appliances and just tools, they've had some concern with me, with the size of the building, with the flagship type of building that Sears has in Hackensack, which is a beautiful building. Right now, the appliance and the tools are all in the basement. So, if that was going to be the case, what would be, use the rest of the building for? So, hopefully, they can come up with some ideas, if they're gonna stay in town and be a partner with the Main Street Alliance. My other concern is the Sears parking lot that sits within Johnson Park. How Sears ever obtained that piece of property, I don't know, but with the Johnson Trust, I would think that would have been part of the property, all the way back at the turn of the twentieth century. I feel, as a resident, and being on the Environmental Commission, as well as being on a planning board, that I think we should look into trying to purchase that parking lot, and protect our green space, and keep anybody with any ideas, for instance, I mentioned this to somebody in the town a couple of months back, what if somebody purchased the property, decided to put a parking garage in that Sears parking lot? What would kind of impact that would have on our Johnson Park? So, I reach out, that you guys take a look at it, get a foot in the door early on, before somebody comes in and wants to develop. Hey, they took part of the property to build the Aldi a couple of years ago, so it's for sale, somewhere down the line, it's gonna be for sale. So, I just hope that we, as a community, can try and protect, number one, Johnson Park, and get the right person in there, right development, when it comes time to do Sears. Thank you.
Thank you. This council has already shown, and spoken to the city manager about making sure we keep our eye on that piece of property, so that we can acquire it, as many as it becomes available. The way I understand it, Mr. Tozano, is Sears does not own that property, where their building is or the parking lot, it's owned by an outside entity with a, I believe it was a ninety-nine, one of those ninety-nine-year leases. I believe it's a company out of New York City that owns that land, and...
Albert and I met with the principals of Sears, go ahead, Albert.
So, good evening, mayor and council. We had asked representation from Sears to come and meet with us, to talk about everything that was going on with their restructuring, and they're still in limbo right now, trying to come up with a plan that is eventually approved by a bankruptcy court, and I think they've gotten closer to that, and I think Mr. Lampard's closer to structuring a deal that makes sense, we're all concerned. But we had shared the same concern that Mr. Tozano just raised about letting that piece get away from us, and that one piece in Johnson Park is in fact owned by Sears. The other one is owned, the main building is owned by a company called Kimco, and there's a thirty-year, I'm sorry, excuse me, a hundred and some odd year lease on that property. So, we've made overtures to them, and we've let Sears know that we would be interested in acquiring that parcel, and the response back was, we very well may be interested in selling it, but we need to get through this bankruptcy first, and figure out what our standing is, because nothing is gonna happen until they get that. standing is, because nothing is going to happen until they get that all sorted out. So it's very much on our radar, and I'll continue to work with the manager to make sure that...
Yep, we're going to make sure we stay on top of it, no matter who owns it. All right.
Thanks, Albert.
Peter Marcusanti, Davis Avenue. John, it's good to see you among the walking again.
Thank you.
I know you were late after quite a while.
Yep.
I just wanted to say a couple of things. One of them, I'm secretary here with the street sweeping during the schools. My understanding was that, if the guy's on a street sweeper, he just does a U-turn. In other words, if we have a three-hour, no parking, 7 to 10 for street cleaning, the sign can stay there. The guy's just not going to sweep those streets from 8:15 to 8:45, because that's when that 10-minute window of all the kids getting out of the cars takes place. So I mean, I think we're making a mountain out of a molehill here, as long as the guys who are on the roots know, I'm not going to go down the street until 15 minutes from now, and structure their roots accordingly. The other thing, Mr. Mike is here, thank you, Mike. Reduce, I guess, Earth Day, reduce, reuse, recycle, last resort. It's kind of hard to get people to reduce and change their habits, packaging is a problem. But it occurs to me now that there was a time with Earth Day that recycling was good for the environment, and that's why people recycled, it was good for the environment. And of course, along with that, they recycled anything and everything they could if they were real friends of the earth. And now, of course, things are beginning unravel, because we know that the Chinese don't want our contaminated recycles, and most of them are contaminated, many of them are contaminated. And I think we're at a point now where, as much as we love the earth, we have to decide whether we're going to just increase our landfills with garbage, because our recycles are really, are more definitive now. Certain things, I mean, I was watching, I guess maybe it was CBS last week, when in doubt, throw it in the garbage. Don't try to recycle it, throw it in the garbage. You're going to pay tipping fees for garbage and you're going to pay, you're going to pay to recycle, because you're not getting paid to recycle, you're paying the recycler. So it's almost, I guess, unless you have better financial information, there's no financial impact to the city if you pay to put more in the landfill, as opposed to having to pay the recycler for taking your dirty stuff. And my understanding was that there was a recycling coordinator in Hackensack also, is that true? Or is that a part-time job? Yeah. Because obviously, aside from the calendar, which obviously we know you're always going to have these problems, I don't blame Ted for being a little resistant, he put out a calendar and it changes in 30 days. We'd have to do something, the garbage can tags would be good, or a letter to the citizens, but we have to be much more definitive. Encourage people to save aluminum cans, encourage people to wash out their plastic and recycle plastic and aluminum, and try to get away from the other stuff that's questionable. Make sure they understand, we don't want plastic bags, we don't want garden hoses, we don't want things that even look like plastic. Put it in the garbage, because that's where it belongs. We'll purify our recycles that way, I think we might have a little chance. Of course, it's going to be a long-term education, but we can move forward.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Pedro Del Vecchio. I just wanted to follow up with the situation with the parking by Fairmount School. I appreciate that you'll have to speak to the Board of Ed about the overall global decision, but as far as the street sweeping, it's a fairly simple thing, regardless of what is worked out with the Board of Ed, whether there's a longer drop-off time or more supervision outside of the school. Regardless, directly across from the school, on Grand Avenue, there's no parking on Tuesday. So, nobody can park there from, I think it's, that one's nine to, no, I'm sorry, that's, I think, seven to 10. So, there's no cars there and there's no drop-off there. So it just forces all the cars, it forces everyone, let's say this, it makes more people get involved in the dangerous drop-off than on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. So on Tuesday, I'm sorry, Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday. Tuesday and Friday, there's just no place for parking for anybody. So, I think that's like an immediate thing that really needs to be done and would simplify things. And for sure, there's bigger problems that will need to be worked out with a larger coordination. But regardless of how long it there is for children to be dropped off, that's, the whole area around the school is off limits on Tuesdays and Fridays. So that's a problem. And then just wanted to add to, I'm glad that we talked this recycling. Many, many years ago, I met with somebody, and I don't even remember who, it was before Jesse was down at the DPW, or in charge anyway. And at that time, I was told that we only recycle number one and number two. So the little triangle in the bottom of the plastic thing, plastic containers, whatever they are. So yogurt containers weren't included, all kinds of things weren't included. I've never seen an update since then, so I'm very happy to hear that we're going to be updated. We really get, I mean, we get the calendar and the calendar tells us when, which is very important, but it doesn't tell us what. So I really support that, being very specific. I'd be happy to write a letter, some kind of a informational thing to add to the newsletter, anything you'd need, because I think that's really important, to do it correctly. I think most people want to.
Thank you.
Good point. Thank you, Pedro. Anybody else from the public? Seeing none, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any comments before we go into closed session? Okay. Clerk?
Need a motion for closed session, then?
Motion to go into closed session.
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Whereas the mayor and council of the City of Hackensack deem it necessary to discuss certain actions under sections 7B7 and 7B8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, which pertains to matters falling within attorney-client privilege, ongoing litigation, and personnel matters concerning the employment of a current or prospective public employee. Whereas the mayor and council of the City of Hackensack is of the opinion that such circumstances may presently exist. Whereas the mayor and council wishes to discuss the following issues: personnel matters, ongoing litigation, matters involving attorney-client privilege, matters involving the purchase, lease, or acquisition of real property, any pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiations. Now therefore be it resolved, the mayor and council of the City of Hackensack deem it necessary to exclude the public from this discussion. The outcome of the discussion will be disclosed within 90 days or such time as the interests of the city do not require confidentiality.
I don't have any specific cases, but I'm sure a couple will come up and I'll announce them afterwards.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. I need a motion to come out of the cow session, please.
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? I need a motion to close the executive session.
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Just to note for the record, we did talk about the Summit Church case, the ongoing litigation involving the Hackensack police officers at 64 Prospect Avenue, and the Candela litigation.